Conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, this is the virtual Board of Selectment meeting for Monday, June 8th. At this time, all participants will be muted and the meeting will be closed to new attendees. As indicated on tonight's agenda and currently on channel 18, we will be inviting people for public comment. To get in line to speak, you must send an email to comment@town.harwich.us. At the time of public comment, those emails will be taken in the order they were received. Those emails may be sent at any time. And Mr. Valentine, I was reminded that I don't think we're streaming right now, so people may not get that information like we'd like it to, but I will wire to the email address regardless. And the meeting is yours.
Thank you, Scott. I want for Jamie to turn us on. We're good? Good evening. I wish to open the June 8th, 2020 Harwich Board of Selectments meeting and call as calls to order, and I'll start with a Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Joe, I will, for, Joe's joining us by video conference tonight, but Joe, I'll turn this over to you and Megan for the weekly briefing on COVID-19.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, and thanks for your patience as I work remotely this evening. It's been quite a busy weekend and day since we last met on Friday, June 5th. What I'd like to do first is just give an overview of the meeting as it relates to COVID-19, because I know there's a lot of interest, excitement, and unfortunately, some confusion. So I'll try to clear that up as best I can. But as it relates to Phase 2, Governor Baker announced at 1:16 PM on Saturday that Phase 2 would go into effect on June 8th, 2020, and it in fact has. And so, one of the immediate items that that brings to bear is the resumption of restaurant service, albeit expanded outdoor service, because we still have not been given approval yet for indoor table service. The agenda, as you see it, New Business Item A, those 1 through 15, those were establishments that, following the call that Megan Eldridge and I participated on, on Wednesday, June 3rd, had indicated an interest and a desire to request expansion of outdoor service. So knowing that we were going to have a meeting on Friday, but not knowing how that would result in the approval process, I had to take the step of putting them on the agenda. Rather, what we'll be doing this evening under that item, because the board, as you will recall, has authorized me to work on your behalf and to vet these requests through staff. So in a moment, we'll get into much more detail on restaurant openings. I will tell you that Megan, Chief Gilmet, Chief Clark, our Building Commissioner, and certainly Danielle Delaney and Patty McCurey and administration have done remarkable work in processing these and getting these to the position that we're in tonight. So I'd like to turn it over to Megan Eldridge for her numbers update, recognizing that we also have an item under New Business C that perhaps we could take out of order, but it's an important matter that Megan would like to bring up for the board's review and attention. So at this point, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to our Public Health Director for Numbers, and then I can resume later on, on restaurants.
And just a response to your request, I have no problems moving to C to make the discussion flow a little smoother than someone else does.
No.
Okay, we're fine with that then, Joe and Megan. Good evening, Megan.
Hi, Larry. How are you guys doing tonight? So we've got the same numbers, number of cases this week as we did last Wednesday. In Harwich, 121 cases total, including 23 deaths related to COVID-19. 71 out of the 121 are related to Wingate staff or residents, and 19 of those 23 deaths are from the residents at Wingate. That leaves 50 cases in the community, and since the beginning of all this back in March, 38 of those 50 have recovered, and four have passed away, leaving eight active cases. So right now, in our community, we have eight active cases that we're following through the VNA or the Community Tracing Collaborative, and they are being checked in on regularly to make sure that they are following the isolation guidelines, and some may be released from isolation as early as tomorrow because they have fulfilled their obligations for isolation. In Massachusetts, our numbers are slowing, slowing down. We're at currently 103,626 total cases with 7,353 deaths related to COVID. Barnstable County, we are again slowing, not spiking. So we're slowing with a total of 1,458 cases in the county and 123 related deaths. So as you can see, we are slowing down with the number of new cases every day, and also slowing down with the fatalities week to week. So our targets are being met as far as public health data and trends, and that is why we would, we've been able to move into Phase 2 of the four-phase plan. And we also have learned that Phase 2 is now split up into two steps. So we are in Phase 2, Step 1, which allows for some things, like we've talked about with earlier on in this meeting, hotels, swimming pools, retail stores, outdoor dining, non-athletic group activities of less than 10. Most activities within golf can now resume, tennis courts, day camps, childcare, those are all things that can resume. But they all must adhere to the safety standards that I wanted to talk to you all about, because I've drafted a mandatory workplace safety standard training manual, and it wasn't all my idea. My assistant, Katie Tenalia, did the bulk of the work on this training manual, and it follows the standards that are required for all businesses, regardless of what type of business you're running. You do need to tailor it for your own facility, but this workplace standard manual is required for any business now that's currently open in Phase 1 or Phase 2, Step 1, Phase 2. And it goes over four key points. Social distancing, personal hygiene, staffing and operations, and cleaning and disinfecting. And those four points are required for all businesses, and they make it pretty easy on the state website to tell you what you need to do in order to meet those standards. So the manual that I've put together is a training manual that will need to get to all employees one way or the other, whether I do a go-to meeting with department by department or townwide. It's what is COVID, how is it spread, how can you protect yourself, what to do if you are sick, self-monitoring, things we're already currently doing, but it's in writing now, and how to come back to work if you had been tested positive for COVID. Cleaning, disinfecting is a daily requirement, and that's one thing that's kind of preventing some of our public buildings from opening to the public at this point, because daily cleaning is a requirement, and right now, we don't have enough custodial or janitor staff to fulfill the need to daily clean each building that we have. And then beaches and parks are opening now, so that's an additional burden on that staff. The personal hygiene goes into great detail on temperatures, and if you have a cough, you can't come to work, if you have a temperature, you can't come to work. A whole section on hand washing, and I know people are tired of hearing me say, "Wash your hands," but that's truly the best offense to prevent getting sick, because this is a respiratory virus that gets on things, and a lot of people touch their faces all day long. Face coverings, the need to wear them, and when you have a medical condition and can't wear a mask, that's listed in the training manual. So what we're looking for is for you to review the training manual, see if you have any questions on it, and then roll it out to the departments, because this is one checkpoint on the self-certification that's required for us to open, and we have until July 1st in order to meet all of these deadlines, all of these requirements. One major one is the training, which is the start of this training manual, and then everything within the training manual has to come to fruition, such as signage in all the buildings, minimum staffing or maximum staffing levels of 25% in office spaces, and hand sanitizer stations, arrows on the floor like you see in the grocery stores, or six-foot markings so people know how far apart to be. So those things are all part of the mandatory safe workplace standards, and this training manual is just one part of it. So we've been working on that, and would really love to start opening places up to the public as we can, and ordering signs and making signs has really been the holdup on the workplace training, and then obviously, making sure we have the staff to clean and disinfect regularly.
Thank you, Megan. You listed a few active cases. Are any of those in the hospital?
Not that I'm aware of, no. The active cases that I'm aware of right now started out in households of a healthcare worker. So a healthcare worker had, in several houses in Harwich had become positive, and then they unfortunately spread the disease to their family members who then became positive. So right now, our active cases, at least 50% of them are household contacts of positive patients of long-term care facilities or hospitals.
Thank you, Megan. Any questions or comments for Megan?
No.
Steve? I have a comment and a question, I guess. I thought the training manual was very detailed and well put together. I guess my comment on that is, I think it'd be, there'd be benefit to rolling that out, whether you do some type of go-to meeting, maybe not with everyone, but maybe you split it off for a couple of departments at a time, even while it's draft, so you get some feedback on what's easily understood and what's not before you finalize that. And it also gets the message out right away. I know it takes more time, but it would be a way to get it going immediately, and then also learn from what the responses are.
Sure, that's a great idea. We could do that.
The signage, is that, is that difficult? Because I know, just ordering some stuff on Amazon now, where it used to take two days, now it takes two weeks or longer, is it a trouble getting that, getting signs made because everyone's doing it?
Yes, yes. The signage was ordered weeks ago, and it said it was in stock, and then it's taking weeks to get to us. We were supposed to receive the majority of the signs about a week and a half ago. So we've been waiting on shipments from places like Amazon or WB Mason or other sign companies. We are getting free signs from Barnstable County Health and Environment for our beaches. They're providing us with an aluminum permanent sign for COVID-19 that we can post at every beach that we permit. So that's about 20-something beaches, 23 beaches. They're giving us a few extra. Those should be here by the end of the week to post. But the rest of the signs, we could make them ourselves, and we have in the meantime for places like The Harbor that are, have been open to the public for about a week now. We've made temporary signs, they're just laminated signs, and they don't hold up well outside. So we have, we've ordered some, but yes, you're right, it's just the shipping is taking forever.
The other thought I have, Megan, is, you know, we have the portable signs that Link puts around for voting when we vote and stuff. Is it worthwhile to put a couple of those around town for, you know, safe distances, bath reminders, and in fact, maybe move those every so often, so we, not that we surprise people, but it is a constant reminder of various places around town of what we should be doing?
Sure, we can talk to Link about the A-frame signs or the portable signs, and then the two electronic signs the police had moved off the exits for travelers quarantining for 14 days because of the parade, the Black Lives Matter parade on Saturday. So I told them that they didn't have to put them back, because I'd like to reword them and put them somewhere else. So I'm glad you suggested that, we'll be doing that soon.
Because I think a reminder, because I think we're, sorry to keep this going, we've done a great job for a couple of months, but, you know.
I know, people need to realize we're still in a global pandemic state of emergency, and we are still being cautious now, and a lot of people want to get back to their normal lives, and we're getting there slowly. We still need to be careful that we don't go backwards and end up having to stay at home even longer than we need to.
Got to change up the message, so people recognize it again.
Sure.
Well, that says assignment to give you some creative thoughts on what a new meeting should be. I'm sorry you suggested that, but that is a good point. Okay, thank you, Megan. Joe, I'll turn it back to you.
Sure, Megan, were you looking for a vote of the board, or is consensus simply enough?
Consensus is enough that they agree that it's, they don't have any major changes in it, and we'll go forward with it.
Excellent. Thank you.
I'm good, I'm good on that.
You okay with that? I mean, it read fine to me, it's very detailed, that's why I think it's great to get started.
Well, well put together, no question.
Thank Katie for us, that's a chore to do that. Okay, I guess now we're good, Joe, to...
Yep, so we've dispatched of New Business Item C, so I can bring the discussion back around to what would have been New Business Item A. So if that's the will of the board, Mr. Chairman, so I can get into specific details now of the restaurants.
No, I want to, before we do that, a weekly briefing with the Item B. I see Cindy's on the line, is there any new information on just general, overall, how, what the feeling is out there?
Good evening. Actually, overall, everyone is extremely happy to be open. Today was a great day in Harwich, open flags flying, beautiful day, people out shopping. So we're looking forward to the update from Joe and the team up at Town Hall regarding the restaurants, but everyone's positive for sure.
Thank you, Cindy. Excuse me, Joe, I just wanted to get that in, so we can move now to New Business?
No, then, thank you, and I thought that was very helpful, and I also promised Cindy that, let me see if I can do this right, so if I've done it right, hopefully everyone can see the spreadsheet that the board members should have. So what I'd like to do is just go through the spreadsheet, explain it to everybody, and then just compare this to where we would have been had the board not taken the proactive approach that you did on Friday. So as I started to say, I think earlier, what you see here, these establishments were participants in the call that Megan had led, that I participated in, and that the chairman was also there to offer some insights to the restaurants ahead of Phase 2 being announced. So we were, we being the Town of Harwich staff, were aware of these establishments looking to seek expansion of outdoor services, namely seating and/or alcohol service. I should say seating and, if they have it, alcohol service. Everyone is doing the seating that you can see here. And so, based on the board's vote on Friday, where you've authorized me to work with staff, rather than for the first time today, have the board go through the 15 that are there, you can see where we're at now. The ones that are highlighted are the ones that I can absolutely confirm that I was able to authorize them to begin immediately with outdoor, expansion of outdoor seating and/or service, because they met all the criteria in the checklist, and staff had vetted everything to the point where we felt comfortable getting them started. Now, the reason why I emphasize comfortable getting them started, I do want to advise the board that the method of approval has been an email by me to the establishment congratulating them and letting them know that they've met all their requirements, but I would want to put this out there for the board to be aware of and the general public, and it ties into your discussion on Friday when we were going through the approval process. And I just remind establishments that whereas Governor Baker has declared that Phase 2 is in effect, you are eligible to begin expanded service immediately. Please bear in mind that the Town of Harwich reserves the right to inspect your operations for health, safety, and building compliance if necessary. This authorization for expanded service may be revoked or rescinded either by direction of the governor of public health data warrants, or if the town so determines is in the best interests of the general public. And then I indicate on behalf of the Harwich Board of Selectmen, we wish you every success in resuming operations in this expanded manner. So what I really want everyone to take away from that statement is that, working with staff, we thought it was in the best interest of all to expedite the approval process, but that we're going to rely upon our inspectional services to now go out and examine firsthand what they're doing, make recommendations. We felt it was easier to let the establishments to get up and running and to see how they're operating to make recommendations. I make reference to guidance or directive, and at this point, we're expecting it to be merely guidance of suggestions on how they may want to tweak some things, but the establishments you see in yellow were all confirmed today and could have all been in operation by 4 o'clock this afternoon. The way that this chart should read is if there's a check mark, that means that the establishment provided a response to that checklist item. So I say that because if you see somebody that has an X next to rely upon use of sidewalk, and X does not mean, no, they don't want to use it, and a check does not mean that they need to use it, it means that they've provided an answer to staff. The number one item that people were having trouble with, as I mentioned on Friday, was a two-scale drawing. And as I emphasized on Friday, we feel, we and staff feel that's necessary, because until we get out there with inspectors, we need to have a true sense of what they're looking to do, and have they identified that, say, for example, there is ample spacing between tables, as Megan has indicated, is in the state's checklist. Are they making sure that there are clear pathways between those who are doing takeout versus those who are dining out, and things of that nature? So beyond the six that you see there highlighted, I believe, and I'll be getting right back into this tonight after the meeting, it may be a situation where Mad Minnow and Three Monkeys are able to establish services immediately. And then you can see, as an example, I think A and W, the only thing we're waiting on for them is their two-scale drawing. We couldn't discern the layout as the way they've done it. And then if you look at the Seal Pub, we're looking for the certificate of insurance. So again, I think it's, I think it's a testament to staff that we were able to get this done from Friday, approval process, to actually having businesses expanded outdoor seating and alcohol service on the very same day that it was into effect. And I know that I've received emails from establishments outside of Harwich that I've gone to before, where they're hoping to be open again Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday. So I think it is a testament to all involved that we've been able to get almost half of those who wish to do it up and running, and I'm entirely optimistic that we can have many more, if not all, in operation as soon as tomorrow. So, Mr. Chairman, I know there's going to be lots of questions, so I'll stop there and answer any questions that anybody may have.
Let me just comment briefly, Steve, just very quickly. I think we all here certainly can only agree and applaud your efforts you put into this. This is a lot of work. Steve?
Yeah, a quick question. If someone has an existing outdoor seating area, Joe, but haven't fulfilled all of the boxes, checked all the boxes for an expanded outdoor area, are they able at this point to use their existing?
Yes, just by the very nature of it. Well, let me caution that. I already confused myself on my Excel spreadsheet. If they're doing outdoor alcohol service and had not already done so, they'd still need to do the alteration of premises for the outdoor service.
I'm talking about...
However, if that's always been in the case?
Yes.
Yeah, we have several restaurants. The reason why the list is so small, I would argue, is that we've heard from establishments that don't have the staff to do outdoor, but we've also heard from establishments that don't see any need to expand beyond their existing outdoor service. So they're fine, and they're operational as far as Phase 2.
Okay, okay. I have another follow-up question, if I might. If the insurance certificate, I guess there was some question whether an email from the insurance company was satisfactory, in one particular case. I see that a lot of people did provide a certificate. Was it true in the Seal Pub situation that they had an email from their insurance company?
So they had a confirmation that I believe was their agent saying that they would be covered. I will explain two things. First, that in most instances, we accepted a scanned or emailed copy. We're not looking for an original certificate of insurance today to get that up and running. And, sorry, my computer's playing games with me. And then, the other part of it is, the checklist that I established that went out to everybody was the same that went to everybody else. So if there's any change in operation, I'd be seeking that tonight from the direction from the board. I didn't want staff to be in the position of being accused of handling one establishment one way and other establishments the other way. And I can assure you all that the establishments that were approved met all of the criteria that were listed without hesitation or question. So it has been the standard practice today that a certificate of insurance itself showing the level of insurance coverage, as well as the town as an additional insured or other reference to the town, is necessary. In that instance, that email did not capture that information.
Okay, do, is it your understanding, if I could, Larry, is it your understanding that they're going to follow up with a certificate or a copy there?
I believe so. And like I said, you know, we had, I, to give more background to the board, I sent out an email blast to about 65 establishments, working off of the list that Megan had used for the seminar that she presented on Wednesday, the 3rd, and gave all of the information to all the establishments at once. I was heartened that when I came in on Saturday, that one of the establishments had already complied with everything, and it's no surprise, based on who was the first out of the gate, that was Cape Sea Grill. So, you know, any concerns that I had initially, I think were put aside by the response of everybody. That establishment with the certificate of insurance also wanted to appeal to the board, and I can share the email, but my statement was that an appeal to the board should be used when an establishment has denied the opportunity. And, you know, getting a complete packet together is not a denial, and it's something where throughout the day today, the majority of those establishments that were approved today was multiple contacts back and forth with staff. And so that's how we see it going, is that we, something's missing, we, staff follows up, we have a conversation, they correct it, and we get them moving out the door. So I would imagine that they should be able to get some facsimile of a certificate of insurance. insurance and have it on file, unless the board wants to take any other action or to amend the process, and I can notify folks.
My question to you, Joe, excuse me, Steve.
No, no, please, I'm done. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
In terms of moving on these as fast as we can reasonably do, is one of our possible actions tonight to, and some of these restaurants where they're missing, say one item, maybe the insurance is an example, to approve that contingent on getting the certificate so that as soon as you get that to your satisfaction, you can act without coming back to us, that we'll speed up a step?
Well, if I may, Mr. Chairman, that's essentially how we've done it today. In other words, I think the process has gone well enough that it doesn't require the board's intervention. Were you to make that vote, as you've just suggested, that's what we're already prepared to do. So if you were going to say that, you know, upon receipt of that last document, any of those establishments, and I'll try and do it again, any of those establishments that you see with the vast majority of check marks?
Right.
Like I said, at least, at least three of them, probably more, I would expect them to be approved as early as, you know, certainly before noon time tomorrow. I think a lot of the other establishments with more of the Xs, we suspect that they're probably working on either site plan or reevaluating whether they have the capacity or the need. So I think if the board took an action, it might be unnecessary, because the way that staff has processed these is saying, you're almost there, you've got everything in place, here are some questions or concerns. But if the board wants to take a specific action, I can work with that action.
But if we leave it alone, they're able to open as soon as you get their document.
Right.
Correct. And as I, as I've said it,
I don't want to go in further, Joe.
If I, if I may, just depending on how long the meeting goes and how good my, my daughters have been, I plan on getting right back into email tonight and continuing to issue authorizations.
Okay. Ed?
Yeah. I guess my problem is, in what we did on Friday, there was a checklist of, or a list of A through G, one, none of which required an insurance certificate. The other, the other thing that we haven't, in what we approved, I'm not, did we approve by a vote, or did we do it by consensus on Friday?
I think by consensus, but I'd have to check that.
If we were going to approve it tonight, is one of, one of the things that we've not done is basically transfer the authority to approve modifications to licensed premises to other than licensed authority, the licensing authority, which is the Board of Selectmen. And that's what I thought we were going to do tonight.
Do you recall, Joe, did we do that last time?
Yeah, so, yeah, the, the, the first thing that had to happen was the Board of Selectmen had to approve an approval process for both expanded outdoor table service and alteration of premises. So the process that I reviewed on Friday covered all of that and confirmed with counsel that you could delegate that to staff based on the governor's order, Order Number Thirty-Five, as it relates to Phase Two. And with regard to the certificate of insurance, that came out of the discussion with the board. I believe it was Selectman McCaskill that had asked the question if I had been able to review the legal and insurance requirements. I informed you all that I was not able to. I was able to, and both Maya and KP Law indicated that we should request and have on file a certificate of insurance showing that they're covered and that the town is an additional insured. So that's why the checklist was amended. It was based on the board's input from Friday.
Joe, to, my memory is failing me at the moment, did we delegate that authority to you, to get back to this question, by motion or by consensus?
Personally, I don't remember any specific delegation of authority over our actions relative to being the licensed authority.
If, if that's the case.
When we, when we assign a situation to you as a hearing officer, we do it specifically, like we've done recently. We do that, we've done that specifically to be the hearing officer on dangerous animal hearings. But in all of our discussions on Friday, I don't remember anybody suggesting that we were transferring our responsibilities as a licensing authority to the administrative officer.
So your position, would you, would you like to do that, or would?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I don't, I don't want to get into a back and forth, but all of the examples that were just cited are immaterial as this relates to Order Number Thirty-Five by Governor Baker. So when Governor Baker issued Order Number Thirty-Five regarding Phase Two, it was for the Board of Selectmen to approve a plan. The plan that was presented on Friday covered both out, expansion of outdoor seating and expansion of outdoor services, which was related to the alteration of premises. The policy talked about two steps. One, the things that would have to be provided for outdoor service, and then the seven guidelines that the ABCC mandates while waiving hearing, waiving application, and waiving fee would be approved. So that was part and parcel of what was done on Friday. If the board wants to go in a different direction, my concerns are, while I was operating in good faith based on the discussion on Friday, and there are a number of licensed establishments that are now operating in good faith based on that policy that I, the process that I presented that the board did affirm.
We did, if I may, Larry, we did, we did take a vote.
Okay.
It was the adoption of the approval process to be utilized by the Board of Selectmen to respond to requests for expansion of outdoor table service as allowed under the COVID-19 Order Number Thirty-Five promulgated by Governor Baker, June 1, 2020. And I, I was under the impression we were extending to Joe the ability to review whether everybody has met the required guideline and approve whether they could move forward with their expansion. I will say that this, on the, on the agenda, appears as though we need to, to vote for these expanded licenses, because it says discussion and possible vote to approve requests for expansion. They've already been approved.
So if I may?
Sure, Joe.
Yeah, again, yeah, the first requirement that needed to take place was an approval process plan, and that was the, that was the discussion on Friday, that was the vote on Friday.
Right.
Because this, this agenda had to have been posted before 4:00 PM on Thursday, not knowing in what direction the board was going to go for approving the approval process. So if you had not authorized that to staff,
Okay.
you would be in the position of doing that this evening.
That's, that's
It is, at this point, it's superfluous on the agenda.
Yeah, that's why that's ambiguous.
So it seems like it's covered. Ed, are you comfortable with that?
Well.
Pardon?
You know, my memory of the process that we approved is that we approved that staff would go through and assemble all the materials that we're requiring and give us their recommendation because, you know, where does it, A and W Family Restaurant, there's, there's really, the only issue that we would be involved in approving was the licensed premises. Well, they have no licensed premise. But, you know, I don't personally remember any, and as I read it, I don't see where we specifically have transferred that. And I'd feel much more comfortable making a motion tonight for those restaurants that have met the guidelines to approve their alteration of licensed premise.
That, 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 if I could, Larry?
Yeah, please.
That would be fine. I mean, we're just, we could reconfirm.
And also, I like your concept of potential, so we don't have to meet back again for some of those, for those restaurants that haven't met it, approve the alteration of the licensed premises. That's really all we're involved in approving.
Yeah. And I'm, I think we're on the same page. I'm okay with that as long as, as our motion allows, whether it's conditioned or something so that when they, when they get the insurance, for instance, they can, that sells it, it doesn't come back to us.
Yeah, no, yeah.
I don't want to hold this out because they have one check. Do you wish to formulate a motion, then?
Um.
Ed, are you, Joe, are you with us on this?
I am. I'm, I'm prepared to give the establishment addresses and all that if you need.
We have them here.
I don't think you need to list all those, Ed.
No, we have, we have a document that can be
Yeah, I mean, we could
approved by reference.
Those that have met the
Yeah.
the requirements.
Yeah.
As indicated by the town in an email to all of the businesses, we will approve, you know, their expanded operation. And I guess you want to add to that something about, and those that are able to meet the requirements that they haven't as yet met.
Yes.
Upon meeting those, will be able to
They've met the needs.
Yeah.
Met the requirements. Is that your motion?
It would be, I'm, I'm
You want me to say it, or do you want to?
Either, either way, it's, it's fine.
I move that we approve alteration of license premise for, is it nine or seven?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, right now.
For the nine restaurants referenced on the Town of Howard's expansion of outdoor services document, who have met all of, currently have met all of the required information items.
Yep.
And conditionally approve those other restaurants as listed on that document to be approved as soon as they fulfill
Okay.
completion of the outstanding items.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Joe, you're clear with that?
Yeah.
That's kind of a suspenders, maybe, but.
I only had, I only have eight. I didn't get to nine, so I'm not sure what the nine establishments are.
Well, I'll read them for you. There's the port restaurant and bar, Ten Yen, Three Monkey Street Bar.
Mad Minnow.
The Mad Minnow, the Lanyard Bar and Grill, the La Luette, the Jake Rooney's, and then moving up the list, Ember, Capeside Kitchen, and the Sea Grill. So that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
That's nine. I missed the Capeside Kitchen when I
That's the one I missed as well. Thank you.
You bet.
And quite honestly, I do this because the issue of having, of having a designated license premise unfortunately comes, becomes important if something horribly goes wrong. And if it, if your insurance company all of a sudden realizes that somehow the expansion to your, of your license premise wasn't done properly, you lose your coverage. And we don't want any of our restaurants to be in that nether, nether world of unknowing or having to fight that battle.
Very true.
Okay. Thank you, Ed and Steve. Joe, are, are we okay then on this? We can move ahead?
Take a vote?
Yep, I'm, yeah, thank you. I don't believe the vote was called, but I'm good.
Not yet. I'm just finishing to be sure we have discussion in. I'll take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We've done this. And again, go ahead, Steve.
I wanted to reiterate what Larry said. Thanks for doing this so quickly, for the staff and you, Joe, and everyone that was involved, because I know how important it was to us as a select board and also to all of the businesses. And as soon as these other individual businesses can, you know, get, get these documents to us, we want to make sure that they're out there and, and, you know, providing these services to all the folks that come to the Town of Howard. So thanks again for all the work.
Thank you, and thank you for the, the direction and the support of the votes. I appreciate that. And I will convey to staff, because I think people are very excited to partner and get stuff going.
You bet.
Excuse me, gentlemen, can I just interrupt for a quick second?
You're not interrupting, Cindy, come ahead.
Thank you. I've been getting a number of texts that there is some information in emails. So, Joe, I sent you a text, the Seal Pub sent us the certificate of insurance, and I just sent you their copy.
That's great.
That's great, so we can act on that.
And then, and then also the 400 East, the information is in an email from the owner, Gail Solis.
Okay.
Sorry, but my phone's going off. I'm trying to help you guys.
No, it's great, Cindy.
Just be sure that those are getting to Joe and Megan as well, or Joe.
I am, I'm doing it now.
Thank you, Cindy.
Joe, this is not our effort to be sure you stay busy tonight and tomorrow morning, but it, I know it's appreciated.
Thank you, well, and it's for the greater good, you know, these, we all know we need people working and something to strive for, so it's a feel-good exercise, for sure.
Okay. We'll move on then to, we'll move on then to the, I'm getting echo now, is that just me?
We're good.
Move on to the minutes. Does anyone wish to approve the minutes?
Oh, I'll do it. Minutes for approval, September the 23rd, 2019, September 30, 2019, April 3rd, 2020, April 9th, 2020, April 7th, 2020, April 16th, 2020, April 24, 2020, April 30, 2020, May 4th, 2020, and May 5th, 2020.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
I can't tell you, folks, what a relief this is, to have these minutes out there. And Joe, I think this basically catches us up, does it not?
I hesitate to make that claim, but we're getting far closer than we've ever, ever been.
We may be missing a couple, but we're pretty close now, so.
Right.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, that's me making a sigh of relief again. C, we covered.
Yeah.
Moving on to D, and Joe, I think you had a comment on D to
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in reviewing the application, I would ask that this be brought back next week. What the applicant's requesting is relief from the bylaw, so we have to expressly state that it is a request to, to be relieved from XYZ bylaw. So we'll work on the correct language in the notice and have this for next, next week.
Okay.
Okay. And that's fine, as we talked, this is Leo Kukunus' annual get-together, and there's not, there's some time yet, but he was anxious to go ahead and get it approved so he can be sure his plans are in place. And we'll bring that back next week, then.
Thank you, and I'm, Mr. Chairman, the next item on your agenda, we have part of our procurement team, Griffin Rider. I know that Bob, Lawton, and Griffin Rider have met virtually with the Chair of CPC, and I know you also have some documents in your packet that relate to CPC as the timing works out. But with your indulgence, I'd ask our town engineer, who's part of our procurement team, to just give an update on where the, where they are at with CPC procurements.
That would, that would be great.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
We can.
Great. So just going through my list here in the spreadsheet, Brooks Academy Museum Brooks Academy Museum, the, the first part of that is an engineering study for this structural integrity of the foundation. And I have reached out to an engineering firm that has done some historic work, actually in UMass Amherst that I'd worked with previously. So I'm looking to get a scope from them to move that forward. So that, that's in action. Hinkley Pond, you know, we've done the, the alum treatment and testing and the next stage is, is to. Sort of revitalize that little, that bike area right off the bike trail. And putting in an overlook and stairs down to access the pond and some bike parking up top and maybe a picnic table or two. So I'm working with Amy Usavsky on that. We're actually meeting this week to sort of get that, get that going. Some of these have been delayed slightly just because of the situation with COVID and, and some of. We've been doing some procurement for COVID. That, that has been important to get done. Anyways, moving down my list, the Brooks, Brooks Park Expansion, the lighting project. I think this is one that Joe's referring to. We, we've engaged an engineering consulting firm to do a preliminary electrical study for us there. And that contract was signed at the end of last week and we just finalized that this morning with getting that over to the engineering firm to get them started with that. So that's, that'll get, that's getting going, which is working with Eric on that.
Griffin, can.
Griffin?
Yep.
Can Steve wants to interrupt you with a question?
I have a question on the, on the, on the Brooks Park situation. I mean, how, how long is that? How long has that been in the works? Hasn't that? Haven't we been trying to get this done for like an incredibly long period of time?
So Griff, I'll, I'll get into that. It's coming up on two years, I believe. It would have been two years had we had town meeting at our, our regularly scheduled time. There was about an eight months delay getting the project even to administration. And this item here is, is probably as small or as insignificant as it seems is, is the linchpin to everything. We were trying to get. Specs for lighting based on current standards and current vendors. And weren't able to do so based on the specs that were offered. They were out of date and, and favored only one vendor. So the accomplishment of getting the lighting engineer is huge because that's what held everything up. They'll be able to advise the town on what is necessary for the project and make recommendations for the specs that can then be used to go out to bid to get it done. Griff, did I capture that last part correctly?
Yes. Thank you.
Do we have a sense on the time on that?
The, the study shouldn't take that long. I, I emailed with, with the engineer today looking to schedule the site survey, which will be their kickoff for it. I mean, overall, it should only take a month or so to get the study done, but it's a matter of getting it kicked off, so hopefully he's got time to come down here soon.
Okay. Thank you.
I saw Steve, follow-up question is going to be, once we get the study, how long will it be before we get the project done?
Well, we'll have to take the recommendations of the engineer and go from there. I mean, I would, I would imagine that we can turn around specifications to go out to bid in relatively short order, but, you know, the, the study will, will dictate, you know, how that goes forward.
Yeah, this is too late, you know, Steve infers this has been, become a real sore, sore spot for a lot of people in town, the delays, so. Appreciate your efforts on that. And anything you can do to get it. I'm not sure we're going to play baseball this year, but the sooner we get that done, the better at this point. Just to get it off the, cross that off. Hinkley's, by the way, is an important one because we CPC approved funds to. Alum treatment to clean it up and part of the. Criteria on that was public access to spend the town money. So having that done will also be a great step forward in that project.
Right.
Griffin, anything else?
Just a couple others. The Depot Street Bicycle Crossing System, I'm working with Paul Gazia on that. I think I've got two vendors that we can get quotes from on that. And we don't even necessarily do a whole advertising for bid because the price is, is less than $50,000. So I think we can streamline that from, from the way it's been done in the past. I think the one thing on that is just determining whether it's essential spending. So I'm going to work with Paul on that and present that to Joe. And then the one other item I had was the Brooks Park Bathroom. That is, is not open yet. We are continuing to move forward with the variance, with the variance process with the state. The application was filed earlier this year and they've just requested some additional information, so I'm hoping to get that back to them in, in short order.
Could I, I know Ed has a question. Can I just follow up on this? Why do we need a variance for the bathroom at Brooks Park? What, what triggers that?
Some of the dimensions for the bathroom as it was built don't meet. Accessible standards. There's a few dimensions that are a few inches short. So therefore it's, it's not, it's not necessarily an accessible bathroom or, or we need a variance in order to, to open up. So that's, that's working with the building department. That's what, you know, Ray was looking to see the variance from, from the state.
And the, and the size of, I assume that's based on the size of the building. Are we, are we restricted in a way that prevents us submitting ADA requirements? I assume so, but.
It's, it's just some of the interior dimensions of that bathroom don't quite meet some of the. You know, RDI that you need, I guess, that you, you could potentially need to turn a wheelchair around or, or something like that. So I think it all gets down to that.
You're modifying me.
To me, some of, some of the dimensions are, seem insignificant, but that's not necessarily for me to decide.
Okay. No, nor me. You're right, Ed.
Well, I have a question on the previous. Project, but on, on the bathroom. So the, the, the project on the bathroom is a renovation of the existing structure?
The Brooks Park Bathroom?
Yeah.
But those are the new bathrooms that were constructed adjacent to the bike trail near the picnic pavilion that was, that was also built recently.
So those are the ones that have the, the radius problems?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
So they were, they were too small when they were put in just recently, huh?
And what, and the previous project?
Which one?
What was the previous project?
Oh, the lights at the, is that what you were talking about?
No.
The Brooks Park, the Hinkley's Pond. We talked about Hinkley's Pond, the lighting.
The, yeah, the crossing lights.
Crossing light, yeah.
On Depot.
On Depot. I get a lot of interest from folks in, bike riders in town and drivers that. Whatever lighting system that we seem to be using on most of our crossings. When it starts raining, they sort of flash all the time and nobody's ever around. Whereas it appears that some of our neighboring communities, the warning lighting systems that they've adopted tend to. Respond more accurately and more consistently.
So. I'd be interested to know which, which communities that came from. I know I've worked with the Town of Dennis and the Town of Armith. They have a different system, but they've had similar issues where. Rain, the vendor once said spider webs and other things were causing it to, to go off. So I, I know that a lot of these sometimes do have issues due to weather, whether it be rain, wind or, or other issues. They're not perfect, but.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve.
Where, where do we stand on the elementary school playground?
So that's a fiscal year 21 CPC project that would have to be approved through annual town meeting in September.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Griffin, anything, anything else to add?
No, that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any other questions. Thank you for the time.
Well.
If I may, while we have him?
Pardon?
I, I just had one item for Griffin before we lose him and before you open a public forum, if you have a moment.
Sure do.
So I was, I'm going to talk about contracts under TA report, but Griffin, I know in the packet there is the. Harwich Elementary School, Harwich Cultural Center groundwater discharge permit renewal application, which I've signed. It's under 1700. Can you remind me again, the, there was a second part of that, I believe, that's a dollar amount higher that would require the board's approval? Am I remembering that correctly?
Yes. The second part of that is, is about a $50,000 contract for the operation and maintenance of the, of the actual septic system. That cost is, is from what I understand is shared with, with the school because it's a shared system between the cultural center and the elementary school. So historically, that cost has been, has been split.
Thank you.
So it's about $25,000 that, that the town is responsible for.
Thank you. We'll, we'll have that coming back, Larry, at a future meeting.
Okay.
Thanks, Griff.
Thanks, Ken Griffin.
Yeah, you know, that's. We'll sort of be back.
I'm sorry, Griffin, we missed that. I missed that last part.
Hello?
Well, we'll move on. I'm not sure what was going on there, but. We're at.
I think, I think there was feedback from another phone. I, I had nothing more to add.
Okay. You're usually clearer than that, Griffin. We'll let you go at this time. Thanks again. Moving then to Scott, you wish to open it up for public. Forum now then?
Yes, please. I think that that was our first caller that just joined us. The owner of the Seal Pub is very interested in speaking, so I've been texting with him. Excuse me. And I did try to get him in, so let me just open that up real quick and see if, see if that is him on the.
Okay.
On the.
Okay.
Good you had a delay.
Yep, is that you?
Yes, that's me.
Who is here, sir?
Can you hear me?
We can. Is this Bob Young?
Yes, this is Bob Young, owner of the Seal Pub.
Okay.
With my partners. I feel, gentlemen, at such a disadvantage here because I wanted to be there to speak at the time that my business was being considered. And I feel that I met all the guidelines. First of all, last week I submitted a plan before it was asked for and I supplied the email from my insurance agent. Which I think led you guys to trigger, or the staff to trigger to ask for in insurance from everybody. However, I submitted the insurance certificate this afternoon. And I have to say that I'm disappointed in the staff because they don't check their emails and they don't respond to their voicemails. And so once they set these arbitrary deadlines, whether it's Friday or it's today, it's. Beside the point because they miss the, what we've given them. And here it is, a celebratory day where we finally get to serve some business here and we are completely ignored and told to come back. That's not business friendly. And I'm not trying to get personal here, but they need to bring us into the, the discussion. At the Zoom meeting that we had with Megan and Joe, we, we were told we could chat questions. We weren't told to participate. This was not a discussion. This has been lectures, ongoing lectures, what we can't do, what we have to do. And then I'm subjected to an agenda item I can't speak about and evidently we're denied or something's passed on. It's not fair. I have a lot of people trying to come back to work and I just urge you guys. You, you promised us it wouldn't just be staff, that it would be the selectmen that would take this over and they would see to it that this was streamlined process. That did not happen. Okay? There were other hoops to jump through and that wasn't what was told to us. So this has not been a streamlined process. I appreciate you guys going the extra mile to get us up and running, but there's things left out there. And my staff wants to come back to work, so I hope that you guys will allow my pub and cafe to open as I put down on my application. Now Megan seems to have a problem with seating. She, there's one seat or something extra. I have 21. So that means some person would have to sit all alone at a table. I understand how strict you guys are on that. I'll do it. I will comply. I'll put the rope lines, but let us open for business and let us open tonight and not have to come back to you guys. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Bob, thanks for your comments. I'm not sure whether you, you were listening to our previous parts of the meeting. But we did approve your Seal Pub on the contingency that the one item, the insurance document was filed and Cindy informed us.
Tell Joe Powers for me, it's in his inbox.
Just a moment.
And it has been in his inbox since four o'clock this afternoon.
Bob, let me finish. What the requirement was is they asked for a, for an email of a copy, not the exact document itself, but I understand the copy of the insurance form.
No, I sent a certificate. I had my, my insurance agent scramble to get you guys an insurance certificate, not just an email. He has that in his inbox. It was there before this meeting. Please pay attention to businesses and give us the extra mile before the meetings. Just check your inbox. That's all I ask. It was there.
The end result, I. The end, end result is that we approved that, so you can, Joe has now has the information to sign off on that, so you can open tomorrow.
Okay, great. Thank you then very much. I appreciate it. You guys have done a great job at the selectman level. I love that. Thank you.
Let me just comment further. I, I know we're all anxious to get going, but, you know, we do have them to staff and they've worked very hard to go through these documents, so I'm hoping that.
I appreciate staff. I just asked that before they go into a meeting to check their emails. That's it.
I'm sure that everyone will take that to heart.
Yeah.
And I'm hoping you, I'm hoping I can stop by tomorrow, the next day and enjoy a beer at your, and something.
You certainly are all welcome.
Anyone else have a comment on that? Hey, Scott, any other callers that wish to talk to us?
Nobody else, sir.
Okay. Joe, we'll move then to your, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got three quick items, actually four quick items, and then I'd like to just report on the weekend if I could. First, in your packets, you already heard from Griffin about the, the Brooks Park, but. Brooks Park and White House Field Engineering Study, those are in your packets because as I've said in previous meetings, I will always advise the board when I've signed contracts. Values of 25,000 or less. So we were able to cover that through procurement. Made reference to the Harwich Elementary School and Harwich Cultural Center. The first contract, the one for 12, $1,700, is the discharge permit renewal process. And then, as you heard our engineer say, there's a second item that will be worked through staff that is actually the operations and maintenance of that same system. So I wanted to bring you up to speed on those two items. You see in your packet, there's a draft memo. This is the holiday schedule for the remainder, or excuse me, for fiscal year 2021. You know, we're trying to just put some quote "normal" items back in there. I'm not really sure how the board would have done it in the past. If it's a vote of the board or if you just want to be made aware of the holiday schedule. Either way, you have that in your documents.
It's always been a vote of the board.
Okay, so I can notice that as a vote of the board on the 15th if you'd like.
Yes.
Unless you think it's sufficient to do it now.
Well, we'll bring it back to 15th because then everyone will be here.
Will do. Thank you. And then our, our conservation administrator made me aware today of an issue or a project, I should say, she's working on. And I told her that if she could give me some materials, I'd get it before the board. But this is regarding conservation work at 11 Shore Road. Amy has indicated that the owners of 11 Shore Road would like to be able to put some sand on their beach. She said they will do so with the townwide nourishment permit that exists with Conservation Commission. In order to get the sand on their beach, they would like to bring it to Pleasant Road Beach Parking Lot, use a front-end loader to bring it to their property, which is immediately adjacent to the town beach on the east. It would be a one-day operation. Mr. Bob Perry, who's representing the property owners, has talked to Conservation Administrator, the DPW Director and Recreation. the DPW Director, and Recreation and Beach Director. There are no plovers in the area, so they're just looking for approval. Megan, excuse me, Amy indicates that the lot is the selectman's property, so I'm asking the board, do you want this to be an agenda item for 6, June 15th, or is this a matter that can be relegated to staff, as far as the approval of that property?
Let's bring it back in the agenda item on the 15th, and I apologize to Amy, I promised I'd read the draft, and I lost track of it as well.
So I'll, I'll work with staff, we'll have that back next week.
I think it's straightforward, but I will be sure we follow our normal process on nourishment.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And then, and then lastly, I would just like to offer my reflection, if I may. I mentioned that I was in Town Hall on Saturday, working on restaurant submittals and things of that nature, and I was also interested to, to see the protests that we talked about on Friday, and the only word I keep coming back to is remarkable, insofar as the outpouring of expression, grief, consternation, and anger, but at no time was it anything but peaceful, respectful, and impactful. And so I just wanted to take a moment to thank anyone and everyone that had a hand in that. Obviously, our public safety are in a difficult spot these days, with reflection happening nationally, but for me, Saturday was a day where every part of the town of Harwich, and I mean that as a capital T for staff, and small lower, or lowercase T for the town itself, just really an R-inspired turnout of expression in the community, and done so in a, in a manner that was, that I'll never forget, and I just want to do, offer my appreciation to all. And just to add a quick story, I, as I was leaving on Saturday, I came across two young women who were walking on Old Colony Road with trash bags, picking up trash, and I, I pulled over and just wanted to thank them for why they were doing it, and they said that they were friends of the organizers, and that they were intent on making sure that the town of Harwich was in better shape after the event than it was before, and I was, I'll be honest with you, I was quite moved by that sentiment, and I, and I want to thank those two folks who, who did it for all the right reasons. It's just one small story that's, I think, indicative of, of how the day went, and really speaks to the, to the heart and soul of this community. And that is my report at this point, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Joe. It confirms why we all love Harwich, and why we're happy to be here. But any other comments, selectmen's reports, Ed?
Well, actually, you'll, most people will read about this in the Chronicle coming up, I had sent them, sent them a letter, so it would go out in this week's Chronicle. Unfortunately, they do that, that weekend update on email, and so it's out in the public, so I might as well announce it now. The Harwich Cranberry Festival Committee, after going back and forth, and back and forth, and back and forth, and holding on as long as we could, far longer than any of the other festivals and fairs on the Cape, came to the final conclusion that we were going to essentially have to cancel our activities for the summer and fall. Both the music concerts at the Cultural Center, the craft fairs at Brooks Park, and the Cranberry Festival, and Beach Day. We, as a committee, we strive to do three things. One, to provide some activity for our seasonal visitors, and our, to help support our economy, and provide a venue for our local craftsmen and artisans to make, make a living, and to raise funds to support youth. Luckily, last year, we did well, making money, and so we have made our normal round of donations to local youth charities, and also awarded scholarships, which will be announced shortly. And luckily, because of the financial policies of the committee of retaining a sufficient, actually, reserve fund to cover startups, and to cover any possible hiccups if we get a hurricane in September and that show goes badly, we will be able to also cover donations next year and scholarships next year. And hopefully, we'll have a successful run next year, and get back, the committee will get back into sort of normal operations.
Thank you, Ed, unfortunately, we all expected this announcement, so for all the reasons you stated, but it's gonna be greatly missed, this Cranberry Fest, and so we'll put, we'll check that off if something has come up stronger than ever next year. Steve?
Yeah, just, just quick, to go back to what Joe was saying, there were thousands and thousands and thousands of those stories like Joe told across our country in the last few days, and that'll continue over the next several weeks, I'm sure. But the genesis, the kernel that, you know, got what went on here in Harwich going was our, our youth, the kids from the high school, so I, you know, just wanted to, as I did in the last meeting, tell them how proud I am of them. I was very disappointed that I myself was unable to attend, but I, I think they, they did right by Harwich, and it was, it was a very good event, and I'm very, very proud of that. And also, I want to thank my colleague, Ed McManus, because he did a lot of the organizing work, and stepped in, as he always does in situations like this, so thank you, Ed.
Actually, compared to what the youth did, I did very little.
Okay.
I have nothing, so there's no other comment, I'm entertaining a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and Joe, go back to work now.